Before we.
Blaine's gonna go over. Welcome, Council and staff to a working session. And. I'll ask the clerk to identify any items to add or delete, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. There are no items to add or delete.
It just seems funny. Everybody is in my bedroom here now. I checked, make sure I do have the proper attire on. I look for a mover and second. I've got the agenda for the committee of a whole working meeting held in April nineteen twenty twenty. Be confirmed to circulate moved by counselors McLaren and second by counselor Noah Hall in favor. Carrie, thank you. If anyone has a precarious agreement now or when the item comes up. And this time I'll go to our C A O to bring greetings, Mr. C A O.
Thank you, Mary. Welcome, members of council. It's it's been a little while since we gathered together here. So actually, just over two years, which the last meeting that we had here over two years ago, we didn't. We didn't know what the the future would hold for us, but we certainly didn't think it would take two years to get together again. But it's good to see everyone back and it's good to see everyone healthy. That's the main thing. So today we have some some interesting information that Mr. Hoppy and Miss Best will walk you through with respect to the growth future of of the town. You will notice most of the staff wearing wearing masks, notwithstanding the town is rescinded its mask policy for being inside the building. I've asked our staff to continue to wear masks whenever they're moving about the building just for everyone's safety and precautions. So you will see most of our staff still being masked today as we join you today. But if counsel is is uncomfortable at any point in time, there are masks being provided out in the lobby. So I'd ask you to just help yourself to those. But other than that, Mary, we have a we have an exciting day lined up for us of of a more philosophical nature, which is always interesting to to engage in. So with that, Mary, I'll turn things back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. C A O. And this time I'd like to go to the general manager, Mr. Hoppy, to start it off, please.
Awesome. Thank you, your worship, and good morning to everybody. So yeah, I'll just set the stage, if I could, a couple of administrative things today. We do have a fairly lengthy slide deck that Director Best will be presenting. Director Vatch Vatri also has has a piece that he's going to be contributing on the infrastructure side. And obviously, the the rest of the senior staff have been very good in helping pull this together, everything from finance to some of our operational groups. So there's a lot of information. We packed a lot into this day. This is an exciting time at the town. As council knows, we've been providing updates on the county's M C R process over the last couple of months as that's been proceeding through. And we are nearing the completion of the county's process. And really, the focus then turns to to us as as the local municipality. So this is where the philosophical discussion at the county level and the numbers start to get real. And there's there's a bunch of questions that staff have posed that you're going to see sprinkled through the the presentation. The presentation itself has been broken up into four or five main sections. And your worship, you'll notice there's sort of a deliberate pause at the end of each section that council can ask questions. So if if it meets with councils' consideration, we can hold all the questions to those to those pauses, which are strategically placed in the slide deck. So with that, really, the the exciting part of of growth is we we've not seen any any significant boundary expansions since the growth plan, which is really two thousand and six. So we've been building out our communities, as everyone knows. And it's really the next phase, which is going to be taking the numbers that the county will be providing each of the local municipalities for employment and residential numbers and turning that into a vision for our three settlement areas. What is that going to look like? There's there's a lot of questions. If I don't know who's driving the slide deck, but the next slide, there's a series of questions and I'm not going to read them. We've actually deliberately placed these cards in front of council. So I would encourage you to sort of refer to this sheet as the day goes on, because there's some very heavy questions on this list. And obviously, we're not going to be solving all the world's problems today. But hopefully, this is a good starting point for the the town's growth process, which will really kick off in earnest through our official plan review, which will be a twenty twenty-three project. So we are we are starting this year, but it really is going to take take legs next year. And the town will have to be considering all these important questions as we look to to how the town's going to be growing over the next to twenty forty-one and twenty fifty-one. So without your worship, we do have lunch a break right around the noon hour as well. So hopefully, we get to stay on schedule today, whether it's thirty minutes or forty-five for lunch, it's up to councils' mind space at that point. But hopefully, we'll get you get you out of here on time at two o'clock today. And with that, welcome, everybody, and I'll turn things back to you, your worship.
Thank you, G M Hoppy. I'd like to go this time to the director Jennifer Best to start the presentation, please.
Thank you, Mary. So as General Manager Hoppy had stated in the opening remarks, we have been engaged in the county's M C R municipal comprehensive review process with lots of discussion around growth. And the province did establish a growth management framework through the growth plan. So the growth forecast provided to the county has been prescribed by the province. The county's taken these forecasts and employment and broken them down into providing each of the sixteen municipalities with residential and employment population forecast and the number of hectares or acres to accommodate this growth. All Simcoe County municipalities will grow. So we have been recently provided with updated forecast and of the numbers of the forecast and the number of hectares to require to meet twenty fifty-one growth plan requirements over the next thirty years. So as you know, a significant amount of growth will be directed to the town. So this is where this discussion starts today, is really thinking of how and where this growth will be accommodated. And so the focus will be turning from the county's M C R process to transitioning to how the town's going to manage its future growth. And so for the town, this does mean a future official plan update that General Manager Hoppy had said, and will involve some changes to our community boundaries of Aliston, Beaton, and Tottenham, perhaps. So our key objectives today is just to get your thoughts and insights on how growth can be managed, given that significant growth is coming to New Tecumseh. And knowing that some facilities and infrastructures like waste water treatment plants and recreation complexes, large parks, they take many, many years of planning and then construction. So we have to think about how timing plays into the planning, design, and construction of facilities and infrastructure as well. And we need to prepare council with the information that an update to our official plan will be commencing later in twenty twenty-two on how we can accommodate growth and responsibly and fiscally. So as I indicated, the county has provided some updated growth numbers, and they slightly differ from what figures were presented to you back in September and December. So the bottom line is that they will still result in an increase in population employment growth. And the municipalities will have an opportunity to revisit the forecast and land needs as the county will embark on future M C Rs about every five to ten years to assess how municipality is doing in terms of achieving those growth targets and making any adjustments where necessary. So it's not totally carved in stone for thirty years, yet you really do think about the long term planning aspect. And the forecast represents a minimum, but very but very rapid growth. So the projected population growth will grow to approximately eighty thousand five hundred ninety or a seventy-seven percent increase over the thirty years. So in twenty twenty-one, we're sitting at about forty-three thousand four hundred and fifty population. And the employment growth will be going to about thirty-one thousand six hundred jobs or about a fifty-two percent increase over the next thirty years. So the land needs to accommodate the residential growth is about four hundred and forty-eight hectares or about eleven hundred acres. And for employment, it'd be one hundred and seventy hectares or about hundred four hundred and twenty acres. And this also translates into around sixty-nine hundred residential units proposed for expanded communities. So the county is taking a two-phase approach for its municipal comprehensive review. And so for phase one, which will end in August of twenty twenty-two, will include a county official plan that include the forecast and land needs for sixteen municipalities. The county's official plan will include no delineation of settlement area boundary expansions in their official plan at this time. The county will have some policy updates to be in conformity with provincial plans and reflect the integration of those technical studies that council's been commenting on, for example, like transportation servicing and climate change. Phase two follows provincial approval of the county's official plan, where the municipalities will then have the county approve boundary expansion. So the county is going to work collaboratively with sixteen with the sixteen municipalities on settlement area boundary expansions. This is through local official plan updates to meet the county forecast and land needs targets. Our growth plan requires local municipalities to bring their official plans into conformity with the county's official plan one year after provincial approval. So then, after the town is completed its official plan process and the county approves the local official plan updates that meet the county forecast and land needs and other conformity requirements, then the county will probably in batches update its official plan to reflect modified municipal settlement boundaries. So that phase two is going to be elongated and could take place in many updates to the county's official plan. So it brings me down to the the timeline. So on this timeline, the time is marked out in the blue horizontal bar in the middle. And the county's key milestones are delineated in green on top. And then the town's timing is also marked in orange or yellow on the bottom. So in March of twenty twenty-two, the county released its updated land needs assessment forecast, natural heritage mapping, and agricultural system mapping. April twelfth, there was a county council council working session, which also had a focus on growth management. At the end of March, the town actually had an external agencies M C R meeting just to discuss future needs and put it on their radar. We're looking at what are some technical requirements they may need, like school boards or how many elementary and secondary schools, because those all go into planning for complete communities. So the star sitting there at Q two is where we are today. We're at our council working session on growth management. July first is the date that the province is set for plans due to the province. The county has indicated with their timing, they're going to be in early twenty August of twenty-two adoption of their phase one of their official plan and submit it to the province for approval. The town's going to develop its work plan to commence its official plan update. We're going to start a little bit ahead of time because it takes a long time. And and so it will kind of convent commence later in Q four. So for Q one of twenty twenty-three, the county is going to wait provincial approval. It does kind of go into a bit of a black hole because it's a little difficult to predict when the province is going to do anything. And it also probably hinders on the provincial election coming up in June, too. So we talk about crystal balls being cracked or dusty. I don't have a definite timeline, but we staff at both the county and local levels is hoping early in twenty-three that upper tier municipalities will start to receive their approval. So as I said, the town official plan will be motoring along and public engagement campaign launched around Q two of twenty-three. And through the balance of twenty-three, the county is going to collaborate with the town on this official plan. And it's anticipated that Q one, early part of twenty twenty-four, the town will finalize its official plan for county approval. So I'm going to pause here at one of our strategic breaks as General Manager Hoppy indicated. If there's any clarification or questions at this point, before we move into the deeper dive with New Tecumseh.
Thank you, General Manager Best. Questions from Council, Council Saintsbury.
Thank you, your worship. Just wondered, have they factored in any time for challenges through the O L T, which is way far behind already with hearings?
Director Best?
Through Mary Mountain to Counselor Sainsbury. Are you referring to challenges to the town's official plan or the county official plan? Because there's parts that are not appealable to the Ontario Land Tribunal.
Whatever goes down from the M C R and however long it takes the province. And at that point in time, you're saying nothing between the county and the province can be challenged. They're just going to make a decision and send us back to documentation.
Through Mary Mountain to Counselor Sainsbury. My understanding is that there's portions of the county's official plan that's not appealable with respect to the forecasts and and some of the conformity policies.
I have a question, your worship. Worst case scenario, if on June two, the P C government is not the P C government with this whole exercise, is there a chance it could start all over and that they will scrap this?
Through Mary Mountain to Counselor Sainsbury, anything is possible.
You don't have that crystal ball.
Counselor Foster?
Through Deputy through Mary Mountain to Counselor Foster. So the phase one is just the numbers to New Tecumseh. And the county strategically did this because of so many factors that are really a local matter, such as water and wastewater, compared to other regions where it's a regional piece where they are delineating boundaries. So the county felt that to give the proper local context that matters like this should be dealt with at the local level. So the phase one at the county level only give us our numbers. And then the town, through its official plan update, will delineate the boundaries.
Supplementary.
Thank you, supplementary. So thank you for that answer. So then, since our official plan is subject to approval by the county, they do have a they do have a hand in our shoulder guiding us in the process. It's not an exclusive name because they have they have the control to either approve or not.
Correct.
Your worship, through the director best. Um, you mentioned in the growth targets that it's a seventy-seven percent increase in population over thirty years, but only a fifty-two percent increase in jobs over the same thirty years. Is that common? Do you see was this common across other municipalities in the county? Do you think it's proportionate enough for a municipality that's going to double in population? Do you think that's enough jobs for for an area that, you know, we want to attract people that work here and that can live and work here rather than just live here and travel out of the municipality? So is that is that enough in terms of job growth over the same thirty years, in your opinion?
Director Best?
Thank you, Mary Mountain to Counselor Beatty. The job numbers were delineated by the county because there's different strategic employment areas throughout the county. So they looked at all of the key areas proportionately and also looked at New Tecumseh being a provincially significant employment zone as well as other areas in the Bradford area and Innisville and and other areas as well and tried to distribute the job growth practically. There the number of jobs, there is no minimum or maximum. So the town could attract more jobs than the fifty-two percent increase. There's nothing indicating a limit on that. The the limit comes from the amount of hectares that you can delineate in your official plan up to twenty fifty-one. So I know the county has referred to floors and ceilings in the past. So the the floor is the the population and employment forecast. So you can always have more people or more jobs. But the number of hectares is the ceiling that you can't designate more. So there's nothing to say that we couldn't attract more jobs.
Thank you.
Thanks, your worship. Just to touch on that's a great question, Counselor Beatty, because these are just formulas, I believe, the county are using in order to make a healthy community. So if you have this much population, therefore, you should have this minimum amount of jobs. But as the director said, there's nothing from us to going out and and sourcing more jobs and designing more land and trying to attract more industry. But I guess to the C A O, that would fall on us in our economic development department, too, to make sure that we aggressively out there pursuing this type of stuff going forward. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Harrison McIntyre?
Thank you, worship, through you. The eighty thousand residential growth, does that include the M Z O like the the M Z O that was approved for Beaton? Were those residential units being included towards that eighty thousand?
Through Mayor Milton to Counselor Harrison McIntyre, yes, they do include that former M Z O and Beaton.
In supplementary, sorry, are there any other new developments that would be included in that?
No.
Okay. And then one more question. Sorry, your worship. The the public engagement piece that's happening in Q, I think it's Q one of twenty twenty-three. I if I'm remembering correctly, is that between our residents and us? And I'm just wondering, like, it would probably be more of an information because, you know, the the die is already cast. Do you know, at that point, what changes can actually be made based on public engagement?
Through Mary Mountain to Counselor Harrison McIntyre. For the public campaign, I think it will be some a lot of it will be information based. But there's also factors that come into when you talk about complete communities and and what they want to see in diversity and different things like that. I know there a lot of things are seem very prescribed, and they are this round with the growth plan. But it one thing is to get ahead of the messaging and talking to our residents so that they are more comfortable with the amount of growth coming and what it will look like. And all of those types of things are also very helpful when you are working with a significant change to your official plan for the next thirty years.
I I absolutely agree. And I was just wondering if it's a little bit late in the process to begin that. You know, that if you know, now would be a great time before we start putting in our comments to the county to to have that input. But, um, you know, I don't know if that's even possible, but thank you.
Thank you. General Manager Hoppy?
Your worship, if I can assist Counselor Harrison McIntyre's question. The the engagement of the public that is planned for next year is is really to help counsel provide decisions in terms of the actual direction of growth. So as Director Best said a second ago, the county is going to give us a aggregate set of numbers, and it'll be up to the town, as Counselor Foster's question was alluding to, to dictate where we would like growth to go. There are some broad policies that direct the majority of growth to the primary settlement areas, which is Aliston. Doesn't say has to be sixty-one percent or eighty-one percent or ninety-two and a half percent. But so council certainly and and the public can provide input to council to say, we would like Beaton to grow in the north end or the south end or the east end or the west end or Tottenham or Aliston. So there's there's some maps that are in the next segment of the presentation that will get into this into a little more detail. But but certainly, the the public process will help counsel provide direction in terms of exactly where we want to grow as a community. And the other question you posed in terms of the M Z O lands, we will certainly need a lot more land outside of our current settlement area boundaries, which includes the the M Z O land. So that's going to be part of the engagement process in our O P review next next year to to figure out exactly the geographical land area that's needed. So hopefully, that helps.
Okay, Counselor Foster?
I can't hear Paul.
Where does the policy dictate growth? And then where is counsel? Broad ability to designate where that goes.
Director?
Through Mary Mountain to Counselor Foster. The settlement boundary evaluation criteria that was endorsed by council back in the fall will help provide counsel with the guidance in order to determine where boundary expansions are going to go. So that's why we had that evaluation criteria established, because that's going to be our roadmap and using that to help delineate boundaries. Through Mary Mountain to Counselor Foster, there are some criteria from the growth plans and and that will be approved through the county. So the county and we'll get into this later in the presentation. There are some requirements for density, so fifty-five people and jobs per hectare, forty percent intensification in the built boundaries of the three communities and those types of things. So we'll get into those. And then, as the General Manager Hoppy said, after getting that information, we'll kind of look at the maps and and get your opinions on that. So we'll go through the criteria. And as General Manager Hoppy said, there's no definition of what the majority is. So that would be something that our council will have to work through as is it is not fifty-one percent or ninety-two or whatnot. So those types of things will come from council. So we'll be walking through all of those, the numbers games a bit and getting into the mapping later on.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, worship. I'm I'm wondering, at what point do we start taking the numbers that were given? And I mean, we have thirty years to grow over. At what point do we add in or how do we add in infrastructure? Because I think that's going to be very telling as to where and how and how fast we we develop.
Through Mary to Counselor McLaren, you've hit on the next series of slides, actually. So good for you for predicting where we're getting at. So we are going to be talking immediately about, I call them, the big four and all of the different factors that come into growth. So that's we're kind of building on today and addressing.
Thank you. Counselor Harrison McIntyre?
It's okay, your worship.
Thank you. Counselor Saintsbury?
Thank you, your worship, through you to direct your best. Where were the O L T hearings that were set aside four years ago? How do they fit into these quarters on the map? Like, because it's out of our hands once it goes to the board. It's being held because the landowners agreed that they would wait. So they wait till July one for for starters. Now that they wait till the province has made the decision. So they wait till July one for for starters. Now that they wait till the province has made the decision and is it still at the board or will the province be deciding that that just all goes away? How how does that work legally?
Uh, through Mayor Milne to Counselor Sainsbury, with respect to those applications that are at the Ontario Land Tribunal, they will remain there and will be dealt with in due course. So whatever the O L T decides uh will have to be eventually brought into our official plan, depending on what the decision is. Uh, and so the province uh in approvals of anything can, as a we're creature of the province, make a different decision with regards to how they will deal with um O L T um hearings or decisions at that time. But it's my understanding if we take due course, that anything at the Ontario Land Tribunal will be go through that route uh independently from the provincial approval of the county's official plan.
Supplementary.
Supplement.
Uh, yes, just, just do we, when we're going through this process involving public and looking at servicing, do we plan for both as far as servicing? We plan that if the board says this, we're ready. If the board says something else, then it can go to
That's a council decision.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, Your Counsel? All right. Thanks, Director Bass. Um, the next section.
Okay, thank you so much. So the next uh segment of the presentation will focus on news that comes with future growth considerations. And just to mention that the town has been actively engaged in the M C R process and working collaboratively with the county. So since May, we've had about four or five uh council reports on talking about different aspects of the M C R. And today's our, uh, we'll have our second working session under our belt. And so the focus is now going to change on how and where we're going to accommodate growth. And we're going to walk through some of the key elements and some of the the big four is the water, wastewater, uh, financial and transportation. And so we're going to walk through those key elements that also are involved with future growth considerations that council will need to consider. So I'm going to turn things over to Director Vatry, who's going to talk to us about water servicing.
Director Patrick.
Where do you worship members of council? I've been asked to speak about I've been asked to speak about the next three slides. Uh, the first one being water servicing, which is up in front of you now. So can you hear me properly?
No, we can't, Frick.
Is that better, Your Worship?
That's better. Thank you.
So as I was saying, Your Worship, I'll be starting with the, I'll be presenting the three slides this morning, starting with the water servicing. So water capacity will be provided to accommodate our growth to twenty thirty one with the proposed expansion of the Collingwood Water Supply. The challenge today is that the Collingwood Water Supply will not be online until twenty twenty six, resulting in many developments are already approved or contemplated being delayed. So once that plant is online, development that was planned up to twenty thirty one can be accommodated as outlined in our current water master plan. Beyond twenty thirty one, additional treatment capacity will be required to accommodate future growth to that twenty fifty one mark. And the associated conveyance system will need to be planned. And this planning will be through the M C R uh servicing plan, servicing study, which will outline at a high level the needs and the future water master plan will update, will identify those specific needs implemented to necessary to implement that service. And as Director Best was saying, as we identify where the lands will be developed, that will help us then to be able to uh define those servicing constraints. Uh, water generally is from a technical perspective is a little easier to supply than the other ones. Uh, generally follow the existing road infrastructure, the newer infrastructure and gain to your treatment capacity is a little bit easier from a technical perspective to to uh to establish, although it is an expensive endeavor. So we'll just go to the next slide, please. So wastewater servicing currently Alston, the Alston Plant, the Regional and the Tottenham Wastewater Treatment Plants can accommodate our growth to twenty thirty one. To meet the twenty thirty one flows, the regional plant will have to have its second planned expansion constructed. Beyond twenty thirty one, towns initiated a preliminary assessment and this assessment was included in the planning report that was sent to council in December twenty twenty one. And that assessment indicates that there is an ability to expand the regional plant to treat the majority of the town's new flows. This assessment indicates that the expansion of the regional plant will be easier than the expansion of either the Alston or the Tottenham plant due to the technical limitations of the sites and those receiving streams. To accommodate growth to twenty forty one, which is our first step, upgrades, technology options, options and optimization members, the measures are currently available. And each of these will need to be assessed for its viability at the time that's looked to be implemented. The preliminary assessment also demonstrated that together wastewater treatment plants could accommodate growth to a population of approximately eighty thousand people, which would help us meet it, which would help us meet our twenty fifty one growth rise. However, other technology uh options would need to be assessed at that time. As with time goes on, technologies change and again, for us trying to predict what we're going to be using today, twenty years down the road, I don't think is an appropriate thing. So the primary limitation to the amount of sewage that can be treated at these plants is the assessment capacity of the receiving bodies. And the receiving bodies in our case are the Boyne River, the Noddy, Wasawang, Beaton Creek. And depending on the suite of options that's selected, the total achievable population may be more and potentially be less than eighty thousand. At the time the upgrades are planned for the ultimate twenty fifty one expansion of the wastewater treatment plants, new technologies may be available that will need to be explored as part of that design process. Move on to the next slide, please. The transportation, the town's multimodal active transportation plan is flexible to accommodate growth wherever it's located and in whatever form. It's a comprehensive plan that supports transit and active transportation for pedestrians and cyclist while also supporting the planned movement of goods or movement of personal vehicles as well as employment for employment purposes in the in the form of movement of goods. It identifies long-term planning for bypass roads around Alston, Tottenham, and proposes improvement to north-south corridors such as the side road ten and fifteen. Uh, planning for growth will involve maintaining and improving our current road sidewalk and trail networks in addition to constructing transportation infrastructure to support pedestrian cyclists and vehicles for a complete streets approach to the network. The county has also started its update to its uh master transportation study and we'll be looking at the possibility of a regional transit solution. Depending on the outcome of the county study, this could be implemented in the town's future plans for its own transit system. And transit will be something that will have to be looked at further as we go on in the future. And with that, Jen, I'll turn it back over to you.
Next, Director Patrick.
Which one?
So moving on to the financials of this, accommodating growth is expensive. And so there's many aspects of financial planning commitments associated.
Sorry, um, can you hear me now? Sorry, accommodating growth is expensive. And there's many aspects of financial planning and commitments associated with future growth. So as touched on already is the water and wastewater servicing, transportation infrastructure, community facilities to maintain new um uh, you know, for existing and new residents. We've got recreation centers, parks, libraries, fire stations, and the list goes on. There's also the operational cost to maintain these new facilities and infrastructure includes programming like, you know, swimming and camps and that sort of thing, all the way to lighting, repairs, snow plowing, and again, the list goes on. Uh, with that, there's also administrative costs to meet service delivery standards. So we do need to explore other opportunities for cost recovery. And this can be partnerships with our development community, the community benefits charge, and other area-specific charges and user fees. Our development charges have increased to help assist with uh this. And taxes will help in the future once homes and businesses are operational or constructed. And but it does take an overall significant financial commitment is required to support the growth. Next, it comes to facilities to support the growth. Complete communities provide places to live, work, play, and to be healthy and safe. So they also, they support residential employment growth and new facilities will be demanded. So this can come in the form of parks, recreation centers, libraries, arenas, and other facilities municipalities to uh provide. So to maintain and operate these facilities, the town requires facilities for parks, public works, fire stations, wastewater treatment plants, et cetera. So to kind of give a kind of a summary slide of of what we call the the big four that really go into the growth management uh water, wastewater, transportation, and the large municipal facilities. They've been planned well to twenty thirty one. And so all municipalities just don't go out and plan for thirty years. It is revisited every five years. So to get beyond twenty fifty one to twenty forty one, high-level planning has commenced and to twenty fifty one requires future planning in terms of what approach the plan the town will take to plan, design, build, commission this infrastructure, facilities to support the forecasted population employment growth. These components will be need to consider it as part of the long-range financial plan. So I'm going to pause for some questions and just want to reiterate that these questions are from that sheet that was provided to you this morning about how should this growth be paid for to continue to be fiscally responsible? How will the communities be serviced in terms of water and wastewater? How will our active transportation, transit, vehicular, traffic and goods movement be accommodated? And what new facilities will be required to support this growth? So those are kind of the questions at this um point in the presentation, asking you to ponder and um provide some discussion or any other questions or points you'd like to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Your Worship. Most great presentation. Thank you. But right back to the director. So how do you think would this growth should be paid for to continue to be fiscally responsible?
Director.
I think it will be a combination of a number of those items on the list. We will be requiring some partnerships with our development community. We will have to look at um taxes. What does that look like? Uh, we will have to revisit in the future our development charges. Um, we can look at the community benefits charges, other user fees to be looking at more uh cost recovery. And how do you want to look at different things from a cost perspective? And that growth will require those big four that we had talked about and and they don't come with a cheap uh price ticket at all.
Good. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Saintsbury.
Thank you, Worship, through the director best. Um, we can't put every car off the four hundred on the highway eighty nine. And a few years back, we were talking about a bypass that the county might do at the fifth line where Pete's Deli used to be and Hookstown Auto fat light, stop light on eighty nine. Have they considered a bypass for future growth for people who are really not coming to to Alston to do business? Because everybody's heading west on eighty nine to Shellburn or wherever it is they're going. And we're picking up that traffic, but we're not picking up much business. It's just beating up the main street of Alston. So I just wondered, how are they working in in conjunction with us to to resolve the future vehicular traffic? Which isn't intended for downtown Alston.
Thank you. Director.
I'm going to pass the torch on to Director Vatry with regards to transportation question.
Director Vatry.
Um, through Your Worship to Counselor Sainsbury. Counselor Sainsbury, the town entered into an uploading agreement with the county some years ago for the fifth line. And I think in the last uh master transportation plan, the county identified that that was a medium term uh goal for theirs. Now with their update, that made me moved up, especially as you pointed out, the uh bypass, not to turn up bypass, but the uh off-ramps have been set up at highway four hundred. Cars now are starting to use the fifth line. They could tie into County Road fourteen. So I suspect that the county will probably be moving to move that into their road system sooner than later. And with that would become the associate upgrades. And it would likely lessen the traffic that you're identifying onto highway eighty nine.
Thank you. Counselor Foster.
Now, thank you, Mayor Milne, through to um whoever wants to tackle this question, I guess. This is more of a philosophical statement first followed by a question. I believe talking to a lot of residents and and having a decent understanding of what's happening is that the the quality of life surrounded by the individual residents is their measure of the success of the town. So for example, can you take your kids to to hockey? Can you take your kids to swimming? Can you take your kids to activities? Can you walk in the parks? Is there open space? And so I I think what happens with development in most other communities is the focus turns to development, staff time, staff efforts, the development, and the existing residents are are not told, but it's sort of, well, when the developments are built and and uh the taxes are paid, then you'll have the community centers, then you'll have the parks and everything else. So I think our biggest challenge as a council is to make sure that we find a way to make sure that the existing residents are not forgotten while chasing this desire for development. And we understand it's going to come. I think to start it off, the develop, start it off the presentation saying that the province is mandated to the county, the county will mandate to us. So we have things we have to do. But this, that does not mean that should be our excuse to say, well, we've been told to do it, so we're going to do it and we forget about the residents. So I think what happens is there's too much emphasis on the development, not enough on the existing residents. And there's not as too much of an effort put forth to make sure that maybe the facilities arrive during development or pre-development and that those costs be put off to the ones who benefit the greatest. And that's the large development community and that's not a a slight against the development community. That's just the fact if they're going to build five thousand homes, they're they're going to, they're going to profit handsomely. And so I believe that that however we do this, we need to ensure that those costs are borne by the ones who benefit and not the existing taxpayers and not leave our taxpayers hanging with um with, well, you'll get your amenities down the road when the new houses come. That's not really a question, but more of a philosophical statement.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Sainsbury.
But I believe in in all fairness, for instance, if you take treetops, where you're going to have soccer fields and a new school and a dog park and a woods and a uh all the things you're going to have, a little plaza and whatever is going to be out there. The people who bought those houses are paying for those amenities. We're already getting that from them in the D C and banking it in the account until it's time to build the infrastructure. But you have to have enough users before you start the infrastructure. And and so I don't think that we have been forgotten and I don't think that existing taxpayers paid for that. I do believe development charges are paying for for what will happen. And I'm only using treetops because I was in my ward at one time and I know it best from a development agreement standpoint. So I I think that we do get the things that we need. They come, as you say, a little later in the process. And I've always felt that some of the things should always come after at least phase three, particularly the affordable housing component. It's coming far too late down the road. And by the time it gets built, it's no longer affordable due to the cost of the day. So I I think that you have to look at both sides. I don't think that they've gotten away with too much, particularly where we're drawing down on the development charge account for treetops. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Beatty.
Thanks, Your Worship. And I think that's the issue. We bank the money now for these recreational sir uh buildings and components and everything in two thousand and twenty two's money. And when it comes time to build them in twenty twenty nine or twenty twenty thirty four or whatever it is, the eighteen million dollar building everybody was talking about is now thirty two. So I guess my question is, what can we do from a council, as a council, from a policy perspective um within our jurisdictional powers to leverage either more of that money or find a way to get some of these projects built quicker or up fronted or built in earlier phases? Because that's the problem where where, and that's why you, growth doesn't pay for growth because we bank the money now and we we build all the things that 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 money was to to provide for and it's not enough. And the deal's been signed and the ink's dry and it's in a file and and we're done now and we, but we still have to build these things because you still have to complete the community. So what can we do from a policy perspective to leverage more money from the development community or leverage more of those facilities and benefits earlier so that we can maximize taxpayers' money? Thanks.
Thank you. I'll go to the General Manager Finance.
Thank you, Worship, through Counselor Beatty. That's a tough question. How? We will be presenting a long-term financial plan, council, this is late spring, so you'll see the details of what we put together. Certainly staff is, maintains intuition about where we're going. Also, uh, I guess I am the finance person, so I don't have to, you know, do a little, but the reality is you have to be here conscientious of your capacity. And I think that the town has done many, many good studies and exercises to understand what the demand is currently. And I think, you know, I can use recreation as an example. I mean, studies are done to show that we currently do have the capacity that we need for existing population. The challenge comes from the fact that we are not growing. And by not growing And by not growing today, we are not receiving those development charges and we don't have these huge resources that you. You know, that you were referring to earlier. And so we have to get them. And then in addition, we're going to be faced with a very, with a catch twenty two situation because. We have no extra capacity for water in order to support growth today. And, you know, we're we're well along in the exercise and we're very optimistic that twenty twenty six will bring, you know, a much better solution for us. But really, we're going to see some. Challenges between now and twenty twenty six. And I also want to remind council that we have done an extremely. We have been working collaboratively with the system developers. We do have a front end agreement. So we're, but we're well along in that exercise. Oh, sorry, is this one not working? Yeah. Sorry. So we're well along in in our exercises with collaborating with developers and we know that even with this water solution that's coming. Along and as imminent, we're going to have to do something very similar to that. So we have thought about everything that you've raised, Council Beatty. And. There will be some challenges, but you know, I think we have to realize if you want these amenities, you have to support the growth. Because it's the growth that is paying for these imminent amenities.
Thank you. Councilor Beat, or Councilor Jeff.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a comment. When we were at the Good Roads, they were discussing highway. I think it's eleven between Sudbury Thunder Bay requesting that the province paved the shoulders of the roads. And I do remember that we requested that with the county when they did County Road ten down to Tottenham. And it kind of fell on deaf ears. So partnership in the future is going to be very important and we really need to stress our our. Requests to the county that we we pave those shoulders. It makes it better with rumble strips, makes it better for transportation, whether it be farm equipment or bicycles. Or whatever that we get the shoulders paved. So in the future, we're really going to have to push for. The partnership with the county to listen to our requests and accommodate our requests. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Councilor Foster.
Thank you, Mayor Mill. Through you to General Manager Bedford. You made the comment that we need the growth in order to pay for these amenities. I might pose a question in a different way is that. If you start relying on the development charges to pay for growth. You are going to find yourself in a scenario where that becomes a dependency. And when you run out of land, that dependency will come to a screeching halt and we only have to look fifty miles down the highway. So philosophically, yes, you could go ahead and approve ten thousand homes today. And the bank account would look absolutely spectacular. Hundreds of millions of dollars raining from the skies. But the reality of it is there will be a reckoning down the road. So the question is, how do you deal with that reckoning? And I think that's my own personal concern is that. Is that finding that balance and not mortgaging our future when. And that future would be, well, I'm going to speak for myself. I'm fifty eight. At twenty fifty one, I'll be eighty eight. Look as good as as my fellow counselor across the hall there at eighty six. It's okay. But I don't have any anticipation that maybe I'll even be here. So. But I I'm not in a position nor do I have any interest in mortgaging the future to to let that scenario be dealt with someone else. And then back to the idea that. We could deal with more amenities here in town if we never grew at all. We could just reallocate our priorities and there would be money for additional amenities. So that option does exist. Obviously, the province has taken that away from us in the county. So I just put that out there to suggest where do we find that balance because. Five years ago, four years ago, when we started council. There was very optimistic projections about development charges. And if you go back now at twenty and twenty twenty one, those projections did not materialize. We don't even have and and the development charge budget is dried up. Well, who knows what the future holds, probably even no less than we did now than we did two years ago. But I I I just have to exercise extreme caution with with the statements. That have been made that that development charge is somehow a cure all. I don't see it that way.
General Manager Bedford.
That's through your worship, Councilor Foster. I totally understand and I think that there is a common philosophy that growth doesn't pay for growth. What can we do? I think that you see that when, and I'll say staff, when staff put forward business cases. To support requests from council or from the community. We we consider operating costs and we consider the long term costs and, you know. We've been doing a very diligent job and council in particular has done a very diligent job in the last several years on supporting the asset management plans. Which is another example of, you know, growth paying for growth or not paying for growth. You know, we have a situation in front of us right now where, you know, I talked about the capacity that the town has for recreation facilities. And our beaten facility, there was no planning or reserve ever considered for that, you know, for that replacement and. And we're doing better at that now, you know, the long term financial plans when they're presented to council on an annual basis do include operating and. Costs and, you know, the cost to support. You don't just build a fire station. You have to man the fire station. And we do that now when we communicate to council that, you know, this is the the request or this is the potential for capital. We include those. More long term costs. So so we do try to plan a little more. All encompassing, you know, and 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 I think. The council has certainly invested in financial resources to assist in making some of those decisions in the last, you know, five years or so.
Thank you, Councilor Sainsbury. Something met your effect.
Thank you. That question was not designed as criticism and I did not get to the point where all of the good things that you've done. So. I think you probably know me well enough in my line of questioning to. Understand that if I don't say it, I certainly do think it and I have expressed it before. So I didn't want the conversation to go off track. Where I was looking more to the point is. How do you, I mean, I guess philosophically you would look and say, you know, do you take a variable rate mortgage? Take a fixed rate mortgage? What what's your, what's your comfort level? There are certain people that would say, I love a variable rate mortgage and if you had for the last twenty years, you'd be a genius. If you took a variable rate mortgage today and anticipating the next five years, you may not be so smart, but either way. I guess what I'm looking for is trying to understand is that. If the water and wastewater has such a massive expenditure to it. How do we tie the beneficiaries to a payment agreement that takes away our risk? So at the end of the day, you 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 need to benefit from a hundred million dollars. And and at the same time, don't give up control. So I'm asking a lot. So what you're saying to somebody is. You're going to pay for it because you're going to benefit from it because we're mandated to do it. But that's not going to give you control over how the municipality does things. You're just a signatory to make sure that this is going to be paid for and that the expenses are not going to fall on the taxpayer. So I think. Philosophically, that's what I would be looking to achieve as compared to something that gives up control. Or something that doesn't give us the cost certainty. Maybe that might drill down a bit more into what I'm asking.
Okay. Councilor Sainsbury.
Ah, thank you. Thank you, worship. Through you to the General Manager. I believe that Council Foster may be alluding to Mississauga. I have the magazine where Hazel McCallion said that was the one mistake that she regrets. Was they had all this money coming in. They were getting theaters and parks and fire halls and whatever, trucks and everything. And as you say, you run out of land and then you have to pay the piper and you have no more DCs because you have no more land to develop. So I think that is a big concern that they put a special levy over and above the taxes when they couldn't pay the debentures. They had to do that. So if we just keep everything in step and don't try to be heroes and keep taxes at zero, which is what they did year after year after year. And and we were at one point three two and then we decided we're to give away the money we had instead of putting it into this pot of gold and putting it somewhere at higher interest or. However, the Treasury Department does that. It's, I'm no accountant. But I know that that was where they felt they went wrong. That they had all these wonderful things, but they forgot the theater would wear out and the. Amphitheater would wear out and all of this needed to be fixed or replaced. Put in another location because there's a shifting of age groups and populations as the growth came along too. And then the little houses were having people who couldn't afford the taxes because they sat on so much land. So then they started buying those up and knocking down three and four bungalows and putting the high rise in its spot. But that brought in people and taxes too. And so and then, of course, we still have, they have a large population there. So they have a lot they're sending to the province and to the feds. And we get a portion of that back somehow, some way, if we qualify for grants. And I think we did an excellent job. Staff did an excellent job of getting many grants during the COVID time, particularly where we thought they were going to run out of money for sure. And maybe we're going to pay the piper. Now we haven't seen the new slate of what's coming down the pipe tax wise federally and provincially. To make up for those years. But I think that the town for its size now is doing an amazing job. But our whole town budget's only about thirty nine million. So how we can expect just on our own to pay seventy one million dollar for the infrastructure to bring us the water till twenty thirty one, twenty forty one. Certainly not going to carry us twenty fifty one. So we we do need new growth. You need new growth for two reasons. You need it for the DCs and for the new homes and for keeping up. With Joneses, so to speak, because that's what the people demand. They don't want the old style beat up stuff anymore. They don't live with that themselves in these new subdivisions. So I really feel that that it's a balance, but how how we convince the people that you can't put a picket fence around what we have because we love it. And say, go away and expect these things we've already got to be maintained. There's only two ways. One is to have growth modestly and pay for it as it goes. Or the other is to keep increasing taxes. And all we're really doing with the taxes, if we have nothing new, is fixing up the old stuff. Or rebuilding it maybe, but that'll make the taxes even higher at today's cost. And this development charge thing has become a real sort of oxymoron type of thing. The more that we bring and the more that we charge to the DCs, to the homeowner who's purchasing because they're paying for it. That's why the house prices are out of hand for almost anybody now who's young to have a home of their own. And a lot of people are buying three and four and five houses because they can afford to and they're renting them. And they keep the tenant as long as they have their job and can afford the rent or they kick them out and put in a new tenant. That's the whole thing in the United States now is what they've started to do with the purchase of homes. And and so. The the dream, I guess, of living in the country with your children and your dog is kind of fast fading. Because this last market that we had has put it pretty much out of the reach of of almost anybody I know that's twenty five, thirty, forty years old even. And that's that.
Thank you, Councilor Sainsbury and Councilor Harrison McIntyre.
Thank you, worship. Through you, can you speak a little bit to the community benefit charge? I don't think that we've used utilized that before and and how is it implemented?
We're changing mics, Sharon. We haven't got one mic for twelve of us.
Oh, no.
We can't afford eleven more.
It's just the battery, Your Worship. We can't afford.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Manager.
Through you, Mayor Mill, to Councilor Harrison McIntyre. It's it's a fairly new charge. It's it it's intended to work hand in hand with development charges. I believe and Director Best, you can. Jump in if you think I'm missing anything, but. It's it's largely geared towards higher density developments so that you're collecting charges for. Things like parkland facilities or equipment within parkland. Like I said, it's not specifically for a development charge. It's more like a parkland contribution. And other services that are not eligible for DCs.
Did that answer answer your question, Councilor Harrison McIntyre?
I think what it kind of. Illustrated is that there's not, we don't know a lot about it because we haven't utilized it. But I I what I understand is that it's for higher density developments. And I just did a little looking to see what it is and it has to be over five stories, the development. So. I I think it's something definitely that, you know, if when we're looking at doing this growth, absolutely. I I would suggest that we, wherever we can, we get some help and CBC sounds like a. Something to add to our list of things to do. I know that they do it in Toronto. I think for me, the biggest elephant in the room here is the water and wastewater and, you know, Director Vachry did speak to it. But how are we going to, you know, move beyond twenty thirty one? And, you know, with with these numbers that were being handed down by the county and by the province. I would look back to them and say, you know, they have some responsibility to help us out here when it comes to the water and wastewater. You know, in most municipalities that 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 I I'm aware of, that I work with, this kind of. This kind of growth, this kind of expansion would get help from an upper tier. And I think that at this point, we're taking too much of it on for ourselves. And if there's going to be all this growth happening in Simcoe County. I think it's probably time for the county to look at taking on the water and the wastewater at a regional level. And, you know, utilizing the the cost savings that come from, that would might come from from that.
Thanks very much, Councilor Harrison McIntyre. And as you know, that the county has. Conducted a master plan study in the water and wastewater. And a report has been done and from what I understand, it's sitting at the county shell. I agree with you on on financial assistance from upper tier. For us to take this growth on and I think that's where you'll see it. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Your Worship. Just to tie in what you're saying, absolutely, we have to demand as much upper tier. Funding as we can possibly get, not only from the county, but from the province where this has been driven from. But thank you through your worship, just to touch back on the community charge back. How do we implement this charge? What is the like the trigger mechanism? That we as a municipality can go to the developer saying you need to pay more because, I mean, if we could apply that more often. That would certainly be beneficial to us, but I'm just not quite sure how do you, when does that kick in?
I'll go back to the director, please.
Through your Mayor Mill to Deputy Mayor Norcross. It's similar to development charges in that you have to do a study and you have to identify the need. And you come up with a fee to be charged at that point.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilor McClellan.
Thank you, worship. I'm just wondering at this point, when. When we have our numbers out to twenty forty one. Water doesn't seem to be catching up at this point. So I know we have our numbers out to twenty thirty one. And that water is going to hopefully come online in twenty twenty six. How far ahead should we go or could we go? Approving developments because I fear that once, once we get water. Our whole town from north to south is just going to be developments constantly everywhere. And those aren't fun for existing residents to live through. So how do we mitigate? The the speed of development and and how many applications do we work through? And and we approve when there's when there's no water, like at what point do we stop that and say, okay, you know, we have so many on the books. But we don't have water secured. We're going to stop taking applications or do we just continue until until we get water?
I'll go to either Director Best or Director Vachry. Kind of falls in both there.
Through Mayor Mill, I can start with that with Council McClellan. With regards to the planning applications, all of them have a right under the Planning Act to make application. And then it's, and so it's up to the council if they want to pass a resolution or give direction on with respect to that. We do have a number of applications that we have received that have a holding provision on them and they're all. Waiting on water capacity at this time. So it when the additional water supply is. You know, commissioned, then, you know, we will, pun intended, have a bit of a flood of. Applications where we'll have a number of Hs or holds to be removed. In order for those to progress to the building permit stage. And so we track those and and and, you know, have an idea of where those are at. And other ones with the commissioning when it's announced will also be submitting applications in the coming years as well. I don't know if Director Vachry has anything else to add to that.
Director Vachry.
Yes, through your worship to Council McClellan. The only thing I can really add is that as part of this MCR process, will it.
The only thing I can really add is that as part of this MCR process, will it the council identify where those lands are going to end? To what extent? And with that information, then we can go off and we can start developing. How much water do we need? Where do we need? How do we convey it? So those are the sort of the next steps that roll out of this. And then I think we'll have better answers. I think where you were going with, then how do you throttle the development? I think it's going to be by virtue of where it is and how we've planned for it.
Good question. Good question. Before we start the next session, do you mind if we just maybe take a 15 minute break? All right, Pam?